I'm not used to seeing him over there. Used to seeing the chief's-
All rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay in commencing tonight's meeting. We had an executive session on some personnel matters and litigation matters. We have a presentation. Is Mr. Kilpatrick? Yes, Mr. Kilpatrick's here from the owners of Colonial Heritage. Do you wish to take the podium and... Identify yourself, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
I am Ken Kilpatrick from Colonial Heritage. And first thing, I'd like to again thank the board supervisors for the last couple of months for the opportunity to be able to communicate with you, for hearing the issues that we have brought forth and for weighing everything out. When we had our last meeting, at the conclusion of the meeting, we were asked to take a good look at how we communicate, communicate with residents and want to speak with that. One of the residents that was in attendance last time asked that we add another venue of communication, and that is to open up an email address so people who are at work all day and cannot contact the office have another way to do so. So, we have done that. That email address will be announced in the residential newsletter that's coming out in early February as well, and I think you folks will have a copy of that newsletter. We're committed to continuing to communicate with residents and to be responsive to those who call us, who become aware of any incidents and bring it to our attention. And on the other side of that, we continue to ask residents to be...to communicate with us if there are any incidents. In other words, don't go to another resident with an issue, go right to us, so we can be as responsive as possible. Also, to the township, you had asked if we would, if there was an incident, to report it to you and report it to you quickly, and we're going to do that. We're going to continue to do that as well. As far as the system is concerned, the system's integrity, we are continuing to actively monitor the system. Also, the cleanup has been completed, all except for one lot number...one lot, excuse me, and that was not due to the system, that was due to a connection on the resident's home. But everything else, from what I understand, has been remediated. It's concerns about not being able to read the meters have been fixed. The windows, other more clean, gaskets that...and gaskets need to be replaced. Now, I know not everybody's going to be happy with this, but my report is positive that the system is functioning. We're not going to replace it, and I say this respectfully because it does not need to be replaced. It does not need to be shut down. It is functioning, and we are going to monitor it aggressively. And again, should something occur, we will communicate with you. You will hear from us, hopefully, first. That is, if a resident sees it, we hope the resident will communicate that to us, so we can address it immediately. But that's...it is in good working condition, and we're going to continue...we're continuing to monitor it aggressively. So, that's the update. And I know you've got a full schedule, so I don't want to take too much of your time, but I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Who is "we" monitoring?
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. When I say "we," whoever's got the job.
I have to...for myself, I'm a little uncomfortable with your folks, maintenance folks, monitoring without having some engineer, perhaps an independent person, looking at the system and looking at its integrity and making sure that it...or at least verifying that it is functioning and functioning appropriately, and that there's no underground leakages or anything.
Yeah, oh yeah. I'm sorry, I did leave a part out. As far as, you know, physically and just keeping an eye on things. But as last time in the meeting, I indicated that we're doing these...the testing there's on the tank. I don't have the paperwork in front of me now. That technical part that...of the tank, the reading, that we're doing things with the tank as far as monitoring that's not even required by state law as well. So, those components are in place as well. And I can recap this with a letter, but I shared that last time that we were doing that. So, what I meant to introduce is that, you know, we know we had these problems, that you've been contacted, we had our conversations, and that we're looking out, we're taking a hard look at things to make sure that everything continues to function as it should.
Any members have any questions?
No.
Any questions from anyone in the audience? Would you care to take the microphone, sir, and identify yourself with your address?
Hi, I'm Rick Bayforest, and I own a house just down the street from your development.
What is your address, sir?
470 Shady Retreat Road.
Thank you.
Let's recap last...the last meeting. If my understanding was correct, you had no map of the piping below ground. The tank, it was not the issue. So, you're addressing something that was not an issue, it was the underground piping. So, we came away from that meeting asking you to come up with, not only for the residents and adjoining properties, but for the emergency people that would enter your site to fight fires or direct traffic or whatever, to have a plan of the piping below ground. That's number one. Number two, we asked, how much oil escaped? Did anybody recapture that? Are we all just sitting around saying, "Well, it happened," and we have blank stares in our eyes? Third, addressing your issue and then the township directly. I found out about this meeting at 5:00. In the 21st century, can we have email addresses for interested parties where they can be sent a message saying, "There's going to be an agenda coming up that you may be interested in." And I just found out by hook or crook, literally. Had I been out of town on business, I couldn't have planned this.
Mr. Bayforest, I believe when he was...Mr. Kilpatrick was at the meeting on 13th of December, he indicated at that meeting that he would come back the first meeting in January.
I missed that. I thought it was 90 days, and I was just sitting back waiting for the law to-
No, he said in 30 days, he would give us an update, which we're a little over the 30 days, but that's only because Friday was the 13th, and this is the first meeting since that. But he did say that, and it was that he would come to a board meeting and he would make that presentation, so we didn't put that on there, but-
On a broader issue, Stephanie.
If you want to give us your email, be happy to.
I would suggest that we might want to go out and get everybody's emails, maybe that attend meetings, and say, "If you're interested in anything, police issues or other township issues, we can notify you in advance, given today's age."
Well, you can give us your email. You can contact us by email and give us your email that you want to be notified. We'll do that.
Good.
It's hard for the township to go out and collect everybody's email address.
I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting to you is, at this meeting tonight, you might want to say, post your email, you're interested in tonight's meeting, and if something else comes up, a ball field or whatever else it is, you can add to it, and you build the list.
Okay. Anything else?
Did you find...did you do a map of the underground pipes?
Actually, it's not going to do a map. It's private property. It's not needed. We are committed to continuing to do our part to communicate, to monitor the system actively. There...and let me explain a little more, and I'm not trying to say that defiantly or arrogantly by any means, but let me explain that. You know, two days, maybe one day or two days after we had the last meeting, a neighbor, or I'm sorry, a resident was getting his oil burner serviced within the community. And he dropped a little oil, literally a drop or two of oil in doing so. The Bucks County Department of Health got a phone call from a resident who has been very active in this situation, saying that there was an oil spill in the community. We never got a phone call. Bucks County sent out two, I guess they're called technicians, looked at it, confirmed that it was a non-event. All along, there have been accusations, rumors, going door-to-door, a campaign telling people that the park is going to close down and no longer going to deliver oil, that your wells have been contaminated, all kinds of stuff, okay? We have some really legitimate concerns about making public a map of a utility system. The utility...you know, the emergency companies have not asked us for it, and we're not...it's private property, and they're going to...there's no reason to provide that. And again, I don't...I say that respectfully, respectfully, don't mean it in any arrogant sense or defiant sense, but it's not necessary to do.
Just as a retort, my private property, sitting on my ground, I report to the township where the oil tank is at my house, that I have a propane tank at my house. I have nothing to hide. If anything, I want them to know where it's at. If I have a responder coming to my property, whether it's police or firefighters or emergency vehicles, I want them to know what the imminent dangers are. And I think it would behoove you to be, as a member of our community, to say, "Look, we want to share this with you," just from the standpoint of helping save lives, let alone if you're moving vehicles within the park, you might want to know where you're trampling on this system. It's just smart engineering. And I'm not trying to broadcast any malicious rumors that you're now trying to change into the subject. I'm just saying, put a map out there and help us all. Help yourself. You'll know where there's a leak then because you know where it's at on the property. You can share it with...if you've got competitors that you're worried about or some other issue that you're concerned about, then contain it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kilpatrick, I have to tell you that I was concerned about this issue, the underground system, last meeting, and I still am, and I think we're going to look into whether you might have to provide that information to our fire department, our fire people.
I understand.
So, we'll get back to you on that.
I understand.
Does anyone else in this issue have questions or comments? Please take the...we need you to identify yourself, especially since we have new members on the board. Thank you. They want to know who you are.
I'm Ellen Ekman, Colonial Heritage. If this system is working so well, why do we have so many leaks? That's what I'd like to know.
Again, I'm not going to repeat the rumors. We made it very clear-
It's not rumors.
Even a former supervisor, who's no longer here, was citing incidents that had nothing to do with this system. I'm not sure what this campaign is all about, but we're having open communication with this township. We're doing what we can and what we need to do. There's nothing we're trying to hide or evade, and, you know, this rumor and fear among you has got to stop. There are some innocent residents there who are really just trying to figure out what's going on, who are living in fear. Neighbors outside the community think that their wells have been contaminated because of personal agendas, and it's got to stop. The nonsense has got to stop.
I don't...are you saying I'm...I don't know any rumors that you're talking about? You don't live there. So, where are you getting your information about rumors?
Mrs. Ekman, I think going forward, we're going to detail all these incidents and let them respond.
I just asked them.
They will respond. Going to be responding, and I think we've got as much control as we can have over the situation, and he's...Mr. Kilpatrick has provided contact information. He's indicated that they're going to continue to communicate, and we're also the safety net here.
Okay. Well, where's the engineer that was supposed to look at the system?
We asked for an engineering study. We asked them to do that.
And did they?
They said they're not going to do that. But we are going to ask our fire department to make sure that they should perhaps provide an underground mapping system for the reasons a gentleman suggested in our concerns last meeting, so that emergency personnel and one-call systems can respond appropriately. Okay? So, keep a list and make sure you contact the management if there are any other problems that come up.
Well, we checked the development. And another thing, the maintenance men, which I have a problem, they're good. I'm not saying they're not, but they're not qualified. They're not...one man just started not very long ago, and he is...hasn't even been given any kind of schooling or anything as to what's, you know, the system is or...so, I'm not sure he's really capable. And the other man, who's part-time, he doesn't seem to know much about the system at all.
You're talking about the oil system?
I think-
The oil system, those maintenance people?
Yes, the oil system. So, neither one of these men have really been trained to do much about what our needs are.
Do you have a response? Do you care to respond to that, or you want to address that in another point with Mr.?
I would say I'm on the same level as you, and that's that I don't know. I don't know that you know either, okay? You're making...you're speaking about personnel issues of which you don't know. I don't know. I haven't got a discussion about the training that, you know, a new person's had yet. I mean, if that's important to supervisors, I can get you that information pretty quickly.
Well, the important thing here is we're trying to establish trust with the community and with the ownership, so that the more you can communicate with their concerns, the better off everyone's going to be going forward in this.
I understand that.
You know, if you can address that, and anything else, you know, go directly to the management, and I think that Mr. Kilpatrick has indicated that he's going to respond.
Okay.
Okay?
And he has, and I appreciate the...we talked about open communication, and appreciate you coming back and keeping the dialogue open. I'm just not sure if you answered Mr. Bayforest's question about, did you ascertain the amount of oil? Was it a gallon? Was it 1,000 gallons? Was it...
I tried to get that. There's really no way to figure that out. My understanding is, there is not enough, not enough to leave that community. And that's what I know.
Well, you mentioned that there was cleanup. Obviously, there was some soil cleaned up. You have the...there would be manifests as to how much soil was delivered to the landfill or wherever else, so it would be a good idea, I think, for everyone's feeling of comfort that if there are manifests as to the volume of soil that was delivered to a appropriate landfill, that would be...that would go a long way towards people understanding the magnitude of it. So, it's, you know, obviously, it's even a public record if you deposited at a landfill, so you might want to get that information, just so that people know you didn't just take a, you know, a cupful or something.
For the record, in addition to mine, how long?
I'm retired from an oil company, and the way you do it, and I told you this last time, was it's a fuel source. So, you take the volume and burn it. That's how...I asked, were they incinerating? And they said, yes. There is a known incineration level of soil. The fuel source builds BTUs in their incinerators. As it builds the BTU level, it will tell them how much oil they're burning, and they can compute backwards to the tonnage that you burned. We've done this for many years, and I told you that at the last meeting, that's how you can do it, and you could have researched it. It concerns me because there was a doctor in the room at the time who complained about hydrocarbons in his sump. Now, I agree with you, I'm not into rumors. I'm not into speculation. But factually, I agree with the attorney that says, "Let's get some facts, not kind words. Otherwise, it becomes specious. Otherwise, I become not to trust you," and I want to trust you. So, you have to bring data. If you don't bring data, I can't understand it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Bayforest, just a quick comment. My recollection was that they were going to start an incident log, based on what I thought I heard at the last meeting. It would be good to know that if they're maintaining that type of log, that they have in the...residents have the ability to see that log, know who complained, what the complaint was, and how you took care of it.
Thank you.
But that would be my suggestion, because from a customer service standpoint, you guys really don't look good.
Anything else? All right. Go ahead. Last one. Linda.
Hi, I'm Linda Hill from Colonial Heritage, and we brought...well, I got the map from Colonial Heritage, and what is marked on it is from the last five years of documented spills in red, okay? This is what did occur. I mean, this is a map of the park, and I see no reason why they couldn't take this map and utilize it to find the copper tubing, which is coming from the main tank and going through all the homes. I mean, after 50 years, you would think something has happened to the integrity of those copper tubings, I would think. It's a long time. But as far as a maintenance man, the one maintenance man who is in charge right now, it's Murray S. Man, and he was trained...he originally is a tree man, not a maintenance man. He works on trees. He's a landscaper. And he was trained under the previous maintenance man. And now, he has a part-time man helping him. So, the integrity of the corporation, that is what I'm questioning. How is your integrity? Thank you very much.
Linda, make...maybe make a copy of that for this gentleman.
The township should have a copy, too, just for the information.
We also just question, you know, how accurate that is. We don't know how accurate that is. Who drew it up?
No one's suggesting that it's accurate. It's just her assessment, and it's worth what it's worth.
I understand that. I'm just asking you to keep that in mind.
Okay.
I'm looking at maps every day with hopes for November, and, you know, those maps changing me all the time. Depends who the pollster is, but, you know, I know we're not 100% where we would like to be, but, you know, the commitment is the commitment, to continue this communication with council, and we are grateful for the opportunity to be able to share with you our views and our concerns about things that have happened along the way, and we do appreciate that. And again, the things that I've shared with you, the positions are taken for what I've explained, not at all out of defiance or anything else, and we want to continue to work with this township and coexist, and we're going to be together for many years. So, we will do our part.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Anybody else have anything up here? Okay. Thank you. Other visitor comments? Other subjects? Mr. Bandler?
Hello? Welcome new members to the board. I have a question. Stephanie, did anybody go to the pre-construction meeting for Temple Judea before they started construction?
What do you mean by "did anybody"? Any board members?
Any board...any board members, any legal person from the township?
I was not there. I was not invited.
Mr. Canales was there. I don't know if Dick was there. Obviously, our building inspector, our code enforcement director were there.
Okay. You know, I've been into saving trees for however long, okay? It clearly states in the tree protection ordinance in our township that when the fencing has been installed, it shall be inspected and approved by the township prior to commencing clearing and further construction. All trees scheduled to remain shall be marked. Were any of these things ever done?
I'd have to check with Mario, but I'm...that would be a question.
Clearly states in the ordinance that you have to stay, that the fencing has to be installed 15 feet outside of the tree trunk. You can't disturb the ground within the 15 feet, okay, because it is understory from the woodlands, okay? I think we all know that.
Here, I'd like to...Jim, I do remember, though, that during the course of the approvals, there was questions raised about the invasive species, and I'm not saying this was invasive, but I think there was an obligation imposed-
It has to be removed as soon as the ground is cleared, the invasive species. It has nothing to do with installing the fence.
That's fine. That's fine. Just to know whether we talk about an invasive species.
Why don't we just have our engineer address this?
You can just stand down each other, and I'd like to go over, as you can clearly see, that the fencing is right against the trees. It is not 15 feet away from the trees. You are not allowed to store building materials within that 15 feet. You will see that there are building materials right up against the trees. After you go past number three, you will see that is on the inside in the woodlands' protected area. You will see it was run over with equipment before it was ever started. No trees were ever marked that were supposed to be done, okay? And there's clearly trees that have already been knocked down, okay, inside of that area. Now, how does the township let something like that happen?
Mr. Bandler, we're going to have the engineer look into your complaints, and we'll-
It shouldn't have occurred, and obviously, you should have a response to your question, but obviously-
We can't-
None of us here are able to respond to that.
So, we'll get back to you.
Okay. The second thing is, I brought up at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, about the road construction in front, whether or not you-
We're going to have a meeting coming up. We didn't think the first meeting of the board with the new members was...they need to get some background on this whole project before we make that decision, so it'll be coming up in a future agenda within the next-
Okay. I have...where I brought it up in 2009, Jeff, and your...and your thing to me was that that decision would be made before construction.
Well, at this point, I understand that the dollars have been escrowed for the full widening, so-
Okay.
Therefore, the money is there, but it's up to the board to...and the new board members, obviously, to consider the options of traffic calming, whether to widen the road or not, and that'll be at a...I think we're going to do it next month?
We can do it next month.
I think that was the intention.
I have another question. Stephanie, did Mario ever express to you that Mr. Allen was willing to give up his road frontage, his ultimate right-of-way, okay, to the township because he believed that the whole road should be one straight road from the bridge, okay, all the way to 263?
I don't recall that. I mean, so I don't...I would have to defer my-
I have no knowledge of that, if it happened here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I have the pictures back, please?
Sure.
Let me get to the end there.
Okay. Other public comment?
Mark, thanks.
Grab a mic, Peter.
Grab a mic? Is this going on?
Yep, that's good.
My name is Peter McLaughlin from Woodview Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for running for office and for being elected, especially Ms. Mannion.
Oh, thank you.
God bless you and your family.
Oh, thank you very much.
And for your service to the country.
Thank you.
I have a request out of ignorance. I don't know if somebody's already spoken to this subject or not in the public or on the board, about the corner of Woodview Drive and Pebble Hill Road. For the past month, there's been a drained pond there. And I, a conservation-minded person, I care for the migrating fowl, waterfowl, and I care for the look of my neighborhood. What I'm really saying, and again, I say out of ignorance, I don't know if anyone's addressed this yet, but I'd like to ask the supervisors is, could you please consider using some of that...what is that? Preservation money, or...they do it for farms?
Open space money?
Open space money. Could you please consider that for that little quarter of an acre, because it's a beautiful gateway to Pebble Hill? It looks great when the pond is beautiful and full and the waterfowl are swimming on it. I think as a residential spot, I don't want to libel that little quarter of acre, but it would look a little crowded. I think also that if you want to raise kids on that corner, you've got a 50, 60 mile-an-hour road right in front of you, and I think those are good reasons for the supervisors to consider that little piece of land as a preservation kind of piece of land, and I just wanted to bring that up.
Appreciate your comment, Peter.
Is there any way I can make a motion for that, or write you a letter?
Unfortunately, it's private property, and we can't use public funds on private property.
Well, what is a farm before it's preserved? Isn't a farm a private property?
What she's saying is that, in order to preserve a property like that, you need the consent of the property owner.
The consent of the-
You just can't go and say, "We're going to preserve your land" without your consent.
Well, maybe the property owner would be interested if you gave them enough of an offer.
No, is this on our list of properties?
It's not on our list. It's a small property in a single-family lot.
It's a gem. It's a little...
It is a beautiful little property, but-
And it makes that corner and our development in Pebble Hill so beautiful looking.
Yeah. Mr. Blank sold that. It was an existing lot there. Mr. Blank sold it, and the property...the person who's now purchased it-
Mr. Blank? Blank?
Blank.
Blank. Is the owner of the property?
The house...it's the house...he's the house in. There's the pond and the house.
Oh, right.
It's there. He lives there. It was actually two separate lots. He sold that lot, and the new property owner received permission from D.P. to do the draining of the pond, and is going to proceed now with the filling, and he has to go through all kinds of permits now to fill and build a home.
Well, Stephanie, you know that how the waterfowl use those ponds. They have an imprint from early on, from the time they walk like...make way for ducks. They walk from pond to pond, then they fly from pond to pond. an imprint from early on, from the time they walk like, make way for ducks. They walk from pond to pond, then they fly from pond to pond, and then that pond becomes a part of their migration pattern. And it's like a waystation on the turnpike, you know? You hate to see the waystation, the Howard Johnsons disappear on the turnpike. And I think it would be great if, what do I do? Need to get a petition for Mr. Blank to help him?
Well, it's not his property anymore, there's a new, there's a new gentleman who owns it.
Alright. Again, I just say that I think that there are a number of homeowners in Pebble Hill that might be interested in forming maybe an association, or getting some sort of thing going to collect money for that lot, perhaps? And I thought that I'd come over here and request an open space investigation for it. And I think it would look great if we could preserve that little spot there. A little bit of heaven, sure, a little bit of having fun, what about this guy? Alright, well anyway, that's my two bits.
Peter, I just want to say that I've been very involved in that, from the neighbors living in the area, and the gentleman who bought that, his name's Sullivan, I don't know his first name.
My family's Sullivan, General Sullivan, he fought the Wyoming Valley Warriors.
He's one of the family members, but anyway.
Wow! The state of Wyoming is named after that.
Well, the house in there, and it has a sign on there, "For Sale," I guess, is selling the, selling the house, but I don't know the way that pond is constructed, all the water coming down from Country Club to Todd's Pond to...
Well, there's a number of questions involving that.
Down into that pond, west of the roads. I don't know if he can ever get a, I'm just thinking whether he can get a building permit, because, first of all, that situation there is a flood zone. I mean, there's springs coming up from the pond, as you said, he tried to drain the pond, but it's never been totally drained, I don't know if he can ever totally drain, and I don't know if he could put an online septic system there, because the ground, I don't think will perk. So, there's a lot of issues to be considered in that whole situation, and I was very involved from the offset with the neighbors in that area.
Well, you might want to, you might want to talk to the property owner, see what might be available.
I have no interest in, it's kind of like libeling this property, I realize that. I don't want to, or centering this property. I don't want to comment on the property, I simply wanted to comment on perhaps a way to offer the property owner just compensation for the public use of his property, according to the Fifth Amendment. If there is a possible way for the government to save, there's a treaty, I'm sure, with Canada, involving the Canadian geese that land there. If there's a way that the government can get involved, to give that property owner just compensation for a beautiful public use of that property, that's what I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay.
Your honors. Thanks again, alright? Thanks for your help and service to the community.
Thank you. Lee?
Just two quick items, they're not on the agenda this evening, but I don't know if you intend to cover them. If the budget becomes reopened tonight, I'd like to ask Mr. Garten, is it still possible to open that, because you said it was a two-week window in January? Have we passed that?
I don't think we have any intention to open a budget tonight.
Okay. Will you be talking about the police arbitration award tonight?
No, not necessarily. You want to talk about it?
Well, I guess we need to know about it. And lastly, I'm surprised people didn't say anything about the grasso track, but maybe it's something that should be on the agenda each time that we meet, just so that you can give us an update, since there seems to be a level of mistrust about the information flow.
It's on the agenda for Monday, the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Okay. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, February 7th at 7:00 PM. The pension board will meet at Tuesday, February 7th at 4:00 PM here. And you can drop off your Christmas tree at the back of the township building through February 15th. Next item on the agenda is approval for the minutes for the reorganization meeting on January 3rd, 2012.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the only comment I have is that, when Mrs. Lyons on page two thanked the board and welcomes any comment, I was actually welcoming the new supervisors. Other than that, is there any other question, comments, or corrections?
I just wanted to make sure that was noted that I welcomed you guys.
All in favor of the minutes approval for February, for January 3rd?
Aye.
Aye. That's five and oh. Any correspondences?
Uh, no.
Any reports from the solicitor?
Nothing that we haven't already discussed, or will discuss later.
Police chief?
Yes, I'd like to be able to notify really the public that we, on Friday, January 13th, there were three attempted burglaries in the neighborhood, in Doylestown Borough, behind the Acme Markets, Doylestown Shopping Center. This afternoon, we did have a burglary, they kicked in the back door of a house in the 100 block of Woodview Drive, it was a deadbolted door, and they were able to get in and get a quantity of jewelry out of the house. If you remember in the paper, I had January 5th, a house on North Shady Retreat Road by Lime Kiln, they tried to kick in the back door of the house, and the homeowner was able to screen. In the borough, the borough actually took a guy from Feasterville in custody on Friday afternoon, Friday morning, about 11:30, into custody, they were not able to connect his driver, although they were able to prove he was in the neighborhood and let him off, enough to arrest him. We are looking for a third person that's involved in these burglaries, but my advice to the public is, not only lock their doors in their cars, lock their houses, but your house with a strong deadbolt on it was, the door was kicked in, so we want to make sure we check all the bolts and locks on all our doors. But most importantly, no matter if it's day or night, you see something suspicious, you want to make sure that you call the police department. Over my career, people have said that they don't want to bother the police department, this is where you want to bother the police department. After a neighborhood check for a burglary, that we did have another part of the township, we sent an officer around in the neighborhood, and a homeowner actually told the officers that they knew that the neighbor was on vacation, they saw the two guys walk out the front door with the television, carrying a crowbar, and they still didn't call. If you see two guys carrying a television out the front door of a house, carrying a crowbar, it's a good hint, you want to call for the police department. So, it's not a subject that we, I know I'm being a little bit humorous, but it's a dangerous time. I think the OxyContin and the heroin is extremely bad, I think that people are very desperate, and I think that as a community, we have to help each other, protect each other. So, everybody that's out there listening, lock your doors, check your locks, lock your windows. If you remember, in the summertime, we had several homes entered in the northwestern part of the township, where they were going in and they were opening the unlocked windows on the first floor. All they, they do know that all they have to do is get to the half-wall of the kitchen, because the husband or wife will leave their wallet or purse, they're so crafty, they don't take all the money, they just take one or two credit cards and get out of there. So, you really want to start paying attention, we need as much help as possible to protect all our communities.
Is it alright if he still has a hole in the front and the back? Never mind.
Sometimes the chief is dense, this is one of them.
Township engineer, he's not here tonight. Manager?
I just want to report that there is a change in the primary election day from May 15th to April 24th, so that will affect the holidays as well as your scheduled meeting, and I just need the board to okay that change.
Is there a motion to approve the change?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any comments from the supervisors? Ms. Mannion, we'll start with you, do you have anything you wish to report or comment on?
I do not tonight, I'm just happy to be here at the first actual meeting after the reorganization meeting, so...
Hang on one second. Do you need the police department?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I need the doors from hospital.
Alright, I'll follow.
Thank you. Rick?
Yes, two comments, one, we've received a letter thanking us for the great effort in the Parks and Recreation Department, Karen Sweeney specifically, and as always mentioned, it takes a lot of effort for someone to write a letter, so, I mean, it's well received, and as always, we thank Karen and the Parks and Recreation Department. And the other letter, we have some residents that come to our meetings, especially some of the major ones, and the Ways and Means is a good example, and it was, it was nice to see, a nice letter from this gentleman saying he's attended a few meetings and impressed by the dedication, expertise, and time committed to this very worthwhile need. I do not think that many of our residents know this committee even exists, sorry, ladies, but we try to get them out there, and we try to get them to come, or that people realize the work involved on our behalf by these dedicated citizens. There you go, Lee. The value of their fiduciary responsibility is immeasurable. I take great comfort in knowing that as a taxpayer, I am being looked out for. I commend this committee for the service they provide, and the supervisors for appointing them. So, kudos to them, and we appreciate it, of course.
Thank you. No babies being delivered.
Okay, thanks. Sean, do you have anything you wish to address?
I do. I do, good evening. Well, I'd like to, I guess, thank everyone that's made me feel welcome so far. That goes for, I've had an opportunity to meet with the chief, all the staff, Stephanie, our manager, and besides getting acquainted with how the workings, the inner workings are what you don't see behind, you know, from the outside, I had an opportunity to spend several hours with members of the Ways and Means Committee, and talk about an eye-opener, you know, the time that they give, or dedicate to the volunteering in the township, really can't put a value on that. I mean, I want to go back to that, but I do want to say, I did have our first park-and-rec meeting that I attended as a liaison, as well as a bike-and-hike meeting this morning. I have nothing to report there, but especially since I think they'll be giving their reports next, next month, so they'll better cover that than I would. But that said, after discussing with some of the members of the Ways and Means, and even with our township manager and some members here, I'd like to propose a subcommittee of the Ways and Means Committee to explore alternative resource, or alternative revenue resource generating methods. I would think that that would be obviously prudent to have any or all the Ways and Means members to be participating in that, our township manager, a liaison from the board, myself, I offer myself to do that. And basically, maybe it seems premature, but I don't think there's any time, like the present, to, you know, put all these good hits together, if you will, think outside of the box, and I think somebody put, see what sticks. But, so I, Madam Chairman, is it appropriate to make a motion to request that?
We can explore it.
Yeah, to explore, looking at that subcommittee?
Yeah, we'll take a look at, we'll talk to the Ways and Means Committee, and address it with the Ways and Means Committee, and then we'll, we'll look at it and see where we go.
Bring it up next meeting.
Bring it up for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Tom, do you have any?
Yes, I just want to welcome Sean and Ryan to the board, they'll be, I believe, a great asset to certainly us, to assist us to make this and keep this a great township to live, work, and play in, and with, again, I want to say thank you very much for joining us this evening, and the evenings to come, and we're looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. New business, appointment of chairman to the Environmental Advisory Council?
Yes, as the liaison, I would like to recommend to Keith Peters, who is now the, is the present chairman, and he's certainly willing to serve again as the chairman of that committee.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Keith Peters has been a member of the advisory, Environmental Advisory Council. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Eagle Scout proclamations, it's my understanding, these gentlemen have already achieved their Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Anthony Giufforcato and Zachary Johnson, both from Troop 71. Is there a motion to issue the proclamations?
So moved.
Second.
I see we're a month late on this, I guess.
Well, they didn't, they didn't request until a month after, because they snuck their Courts of Honor in between...
On their Christmas break.
The Christmas break from college.
Yeah.
And they have to do it before their 18th birthday expires, until they turn 19. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. I lost my agenda. That's why I yellow it. Okay, a request for sewer hookup at 27 Pine Circle, this is an emergency situation, there correspondence is in your packet.
I'm move for approval on that.
I'll second and comment that every couple of months, we're getting one of these, and whether it's someone trying to sell their home, or someone that has some issues with their septic system, and as I said, every couple of months, someone is calling or addressing their issue in a panic, because they can't sell their home. So, I wholeheartedly support this, and hope that we can get ahead of this and not have this spreading to every, every month having something like this occurring.
I'd like to defer this to Dick John. Dick, is this close proximity to a line that's available, where they can hook up to?
Yes, there it is. It's a low-pressure line there.
This was the line that was constructed by that developer some time ago, wasn't it?
That's correct.
And then it's sort of existing, and I think the parameters are that the Water and Sewer Authority will not let anybody connect without the township's approval, that's why they're here.
And there is capacity in that line.
Okay. There is a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. It's five and oh. And FYI, the Water and Sewer Authority is meeting, a committee is meeting this Thursday at 5:00 o'clock, discussing septic management in sewers in the Pebble Region, Pebble Hill Region. Next item on the agenda is the Bucks County 2011 Hazard Mitigation Plan, Resolution 1610. Stephanie, you want to speak for that?
Yes, the Chief and Sinclair and I have participated with the county late last year in the revisions to that plan that they've had on the books for some time. We worked with all the other municipalities, and at this time, the board needs to adopt the resolution so that they can move forward and implement the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 1610?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, five and oh. Pipe and inlet bid, Dick?
Yes, before you have a bid, Martin Township bid on behalf of the Bucks County Consortium for inlets and piping, and we received two bidders that can supply materials that those downtown can use. One bidder is Commonwealth Free Cast Inc. in amount of $11,300, and Kennedy Culvert in amount of $7,251. I would recommend we award those bids tonight, so that we can be ready for the springtime.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the two bids?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five and oh. And next item is the bid for the sodium chloride rock salt.
Yes, it's the time of year that we participate in the Co-Stars program with the state of Pennsylvania. We have to submit our intention to be a participant in that contract, so that they can quantify how much salt they'll be looking for in terms of pricing this coming year. I would recommend that we participate in that again, it's been a very good source of supply for us, in good times and bad, and it's also been a contract that goes up very slowly, and in fact, sometimes it comes down, unless you're coming down over $10 between 2010 and 2011. So, we recommend we participate in the program again, and all I need is your approval to do that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Five and oh, thank you. Sounds of summer, performer contracts, you've all taken a look at them, they're pretty much spelled out, pricing contingency on whether A through E, beginning with Omos Fad, Philly Horn, Doylestown Heat, Robert Eric Van, and Rave On Van. Think we can consider a motion to approve all five? Is there such a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen, looks good, looks like a great concert series. And Treasurers Report for January 17th, 2017, uh, 2017, 2012, motion to approve, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments concerning the Treasurers Report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for January 17th, 2012, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions about the bills list? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next meeting of this board is February 7th, 2012, here, at 7:00 PM. The pension meeting, the employee pension meeting, the pension board will be meeting on Tuesday, February 7th. on Tuesday, February 7th at 4:00 PM here. And you can drop off your Christmas trees up till February 15th behind the township building. Having no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.